It's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to orders since we have all the commissioners, we're all the committee members we're gonna have. And I've got a few guests. Went out on a limb and put public comment at the beginning of this meeting, so why don't we? Oh, let's see, we have, I think we already proved the minutes that Johnson sent around earlier from the last meeting, I think we approved those by email. If I'm not mistaken, but if I am mistaken, let me know. No, no comment. Okay, I think we did approve those by email. Okay, well, we're at a public comment section, we have a few people on the call who aren't committee members, so if any, I can go down the road, starting with Tom O'Brien, if you want to say anything at this point, Tom? Maybe not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great to be here, good to see you all back at it.
Very good. Louise, anything, or just watching?
Yeah, I'm interested in the discussion on the garbage and the recycling or composting segments and and on the at-large and new rules and get caught back up to date.
Very good. Mark, Mark?
Sure, hi, mainly just want to observe, but I guess the one thing that comes to mind to mention is that the taxpayers met last night, I think we had a good meeting and among other things, the letter that the executive had sent to Prac and to other community members, community leaders, I guess, came up and I read that to everyone who was in attendance. And although we didn't specifically take a vote on a motion, there was a clear consensus that PRTA wants and tends to sort of recommit to supporting Prac and its role as the elective voice of Point Roberts community, I mean, the message from the executive was pretty clear. And I think we can all do a better job and taxpayers are going to do the best we can to stay on that course. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mark. Martin, any comment, or are you just here to listen in?
Yeah, I'm mostly just listening, but the other thing that I would just share is that I'm working with, some of you know that I am working with a church in St. Paul's in Bellingham and Point Roberts has just kind of come on their radar, so I'm just trying to listen to some of these meetings to see kind of what the needs are, because I want to help put together a group in at St. Paul's there that might help with some of these things, so I'm just trying to like listen to see what those things are and so if you see me kind of pop on and listen, that's kind of what I'm doing and so just greetings from that group, and I'm a Point Roberts resident also for those of you who don't know me, so that's what I have to say, thank you.
Thanks, I'm not actually trying, I'm not actually pushing anyone to make comments. Our comment period and it's through Zoom, it's a little bit hard to know what can be done, I see someone on here, Endall. If you, this is our public comment period, if you wanted to make any comment, or if you're just listening in, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, I'm Nat, I'm just listening in, I bought a cabin up there in April, so.
Very good.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, and Brian's iPad. Only if you have any comment you want to make.
And Meg.
Well, yeah, and Meg, but I assume Meg is here to listen to what we're talking about for the most part.
I am, I'm just here to cover the meeting for Pat, hello, everybody. Sorry, my camera is broken.
Thanks, Meg.
There are blue kisses.
Okay, well, we'll get into our business, what I have down here for old business, which is just an update on the status of the 2072 revisions. And then just a brief update on the the schedule now for the recycling and waste reduction seminars that we have coming up. And an item I brought up before, and for some reason it sort of got tabled a few months ago, finally getting a new email address for us, they're all fairly small matters at this point, I think. So we could just go into those and we will probably have more new business than what's on the list here from the agenda. But status of 2072, I would just say that three of us, like I think it was three of us attended via Zoom, the planning commission meeting, I think that was just last week. And after some good discussion, there wasn't much discussion on the actual changes that were being made. There was more discussion about whether coming mostly from the PRIBC, about whether the planning commission should instead take a different tack and and look into putting a moratorium on 2072, but in the end, the planning commission put forward the changes that the PRCAC had proposed with whatever fairly small tweaks the planning and development services folks had made to make sure things aligned with the subarea plan and and standard language that they would propose. So the next step from the note I got from Cliff Strong at at Planning and Development Services is that next we, let me see, where are we now? A week after next, on the 27th, it should be on the schedule of the councils of Planning and Development Committee. I think possibly both Allison probably knows this process, we'll certainly know this process better than I do, but I can't tell if it's on twice, on two sessions with them, or if it's just one, but anyway, the 27th, they should be looking at these proposed changes. And then on the 10th of November, there should be a public hearing at the county council, I believe that's what's what's on the agenda. And I certainly plan to call into those, but they're open to the public, anyone open, obviously, to all the PRC members, PRCAC members, but at the public meeting, anyone can call in.
Did they set the date?
Yeah, what Cliff said was, well, the 10th of November for county council and the 27th of October still for this Planning and Development Committee of Council.
So just so everyone's clear, it goes to the planning committee on the 27th, which is an afternoon meeting. At that meeting, they either accept or don't accept the recommendation of the planning commission, they make changes, don't make changes. If they make the recommend, accept the recommendation, it then goes hopefully on that evening as an introductory item. And then the full council votes to on all of the introductory items to have them be introduced. And then as long as that all happens, it would be a public hearing on the town.
No, thanks, bye. Thanks for that clarification. Yeah, so I think at this point, there's nothing more to really address on that. Unless anybody else can make any comment if they want, but from the committee, but I don't think there's anything more to address on this right now. Well, I guess I could make the point that we, it was briefly commented on at the planning commission meeting, and I will probably make this point again to the next bodies when we, when they have their meetings, that, you know, these are our proposed changes for now, but sort of in line also with Sat Paul's letter, but it's also with plenty of discussion that we've had this committee and throughout town, I think. There is still a strong interest in doing the same more comprehensive study that, and assessment that we really wanted to do, you know, a year and a half ago or two years ago, and you know, start from the vision, as Steve Wolf has said many times, you know, start from the vision, figure out what that consensus is in the community, and then go from there to making changes as needed in the subarea plan, making changes then in what actually, what we're actually trying to accomplish through through local zoning.
And other means.
And other means, right, exactly, but you know, this is, this is still trying to get through the relatively small scale changes that we worked on last year, but this is not intended to be the end of the process, but that we really need to get county council and executive to support funding, which I think, I think Sat Paul does, but we need to get ultimately at some point when finances allow at the county level, get some funding to enable us to do the studies, economic development study as well, as well as trying to elicit that consensus either through with help of a professional like we talked about last, I guess that was last year at this point. Or even on our own, but one way or the other, try to figure out if we can get support from the county to help us come up with come up with a vision that can lead to possible changes in how we have things set up here. I'll move on to the next topic unless there's any further comment on.
Like, like you may have seen the email, we heard back from Flavia today. Now, it's the lady that we actually met on, and maybe we gave good questions and debated while doing it with her, doing it ourselves, doing it some other way, you know, it's still an open debate. But she did get back to us because she moved to Italy and a couple of emails I sent to her went unanswered, and we know what happened in Italy, but she's back now and she's okay, so she's willing to talk again. And so we definitely would want to put her on at least the list of the ways we might want to handle this.
Yeah, I had my hand up, so I'd love to.
Oh, I didn't do that, sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, so I had the great good fortune of sitting in on the planning commission meeting regarding 2072, and I really appreciated that Mr. Wolf had a chance to speak to the commission on behalf of the PRCAC, and I was happy to see that Allison was there as well. And one of the things, and I'll keep it really brief, I don't want to belabor the point. But one of the things that struck me as most intriguing and and of a great opportunity to everyone at this stage is that Steve Wolf said, and it's there, it's indelibly imprinted, you can pull this link up and watch the whole thing if you didn't see it. But he said, you know, admittedly, the PRCAC got it backwards. That what should have taken place was an attention to the subarea plan and an economic strategy and zoning so that 2072 could be a benefit absolutely to bringing things current. And so I thank Steve for his forthrightness in that planning commission meeting, because I think that hit the nail on the head. I think if the community learned anything, no organization taking any inordinate credit whatsoever, just all organizations need to come together now. It's been established. Subarea plan, economic strategy, and 2072 to work in harmony with them if 2072 remains. And I thank you all for being so present at that planning commission meeting. And I thank you for being as forthright as you were, and that's really all I have to say, so thank you.
Thanks, Tom, I think that's consistent with the approach we actually even took at the beginning of the odd process we went through last year, we recognized we weren't going to have the support for those more comprehensive approach, but it is still on the agenda for sure. And hopefully sooner rather than later. But thank you, Tom. Okay, I will, I will move on to the next item unless there's any other comment. Well, the next thing is that we've talked about it a couple of previous meetings. Beth Chisholm from the Washington State University Lockham County Extension is going to offer, is offering for two-hour sessions on Thursdays coming up, starting next Thursday, the 22nd, for successive Thursdays to talk about recycling, composting, waste reduction, there's a fourth topic on the tip of my tongue right now. And people need to, it's a free sessions, it's obviously all being done again remotely, virtually. And you just need to, in the little, in the brochure that went along with the, or that was embedded in the announcements that were posted on Nextdoor and pause, and may also be up in other places as well, there's an email address to reach her to register for that, for the sessions. But there's no other, there's no other planning or commitment required beyond that. And I hope people will get the word out and will attend, so we have some a good crowd for whatever it is she's going to tell us at those times, anything you wanted to add, Allison?
I spoke with her just the other day, and at that time, she already had, I think it was 15 or 16 pre-registers. So I promised her I would send it out again, you know, because it's next week to get more, she was actually happy that, you know, within a matter of a few days of us putting it out, that, you know, she had that many people sign up. So we can get some others to join us and that'd be great.
Good.
Can you resend that email, or was that on, or the link to sign up? Was that on your emails, or was that coming out of like in pause or someplace?
It was in, I know it was in pause and Nextdoor, I don't, I can't remember where else it has gone already now, but it's just at the bottom of the there's a little, she had created a little poster and at the bottom, pretty much the bottom line, I think, is the email address, I don't have it in front of me, but okay, if Allison posted it, the community in general, we can get it, we can get it out to you, Stephen, of course.
Yeah, I'll put it back out on pause, point interface, and it's on a couple of Facebook groups, the mutual aid, you know, the recycling one and stuff, but I'll make sure it goes back out again.
Thanks. Okay, next with a very small matter that came up, I brought up a few months ago and came out of the fact that the old email address that the PRCAC has used, and it is still active, it's just the problem is that we don't control it, Joel Lance controls it, and that worked fine when he wasn't on the committee, when he was still around, but not very convenient now that he's not even around. We can't, we can't change who the recipients are of the emails to that address, I still get them if anyone uses it. I don't think anybody has recently, Steve would still get them, but the new members wouldn't. And so some time ago, I thought we would just see if PRCAC@gmail.com was available, and if not, that will figure out some variant, but does anybody have any other approach they'd like to take to setting up a new email address, otherwise I'll just look into trying to get something that's simple and available.
I really do think that we need to look in the larger arc of time, more support for what we're trying to do, what I was referring to later as institutional memory. But I think in the short term, there's nothing wrong with just picking a name for Gmail and getting a Gmail account going and, you know, publicize that and eventually abandon the one that went to Joel's account, and is Joel still paying for that, who's paying for it, somebody's got to pay for that.
Well, I don't know, I have no idea, if he was paying anything, if it was tied to a website he had or something, he may, to a URL, he may be paying for it, but.
He may still be paying for it, yeah, all right, so I'm okay with, as a short term, going to Gmail, that's okay. It's not the optimum thing to do, we can change it again in a couple of years. If we ever do get a way to service our institutional memory better than what we're doing now. And so I withdraw any complaint about trying to use Gmail for that, I believe in expediency, so I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I'll work on that. Are you thinking in terms of us having, you know, just the minimal funding it would take to have a website, which then a coach could have its own email address? And place the postings and save, create that memory, create that institutional memory.
Yeah, yeah, and a little larger idea would be to have a rolling set of perhaps a timeline that people could scroll through of what is coming up and what has been, and some of the conclusions and votes, I know all that is in the minutes, but you know, that doesn't mean people want to go to the county and read the minutes, they want something that's easy to understand here at Point Roberts. And the committee could just post relatively simple things, not like pages and pages in this rolling timeline, but you know, a subject and three or four sentences, some facts, that kind of thing. And if there was a vote, how the vote went, what's the next action, you know, keep it simple, because then people can easily scroll through it and see now what happened to that thing that when I came there and complained or said I love somebody, what happened to it, you know, where did it go, and this way they can actually look and, oh, that was three months ago, and and I guess I should bring that up again, but I can see that we never got a vote on that, or you know, whatever it is. But there's some kind of, and that's partially what I mean by institutional memory, but that's the public facing, the private facing would be like, I was going to maybe touch on a little later, is for example, I have blueprints here left over from my time with Joel when he was, and I was on the committee, and he was the chairman at the time. And nothing to do with Joel, just that timeframe, and I got, you know, it's pages and pages and pages of stuff for some of the billing permits that we've worked on. Now, we can't digitize all of that, but you know, maybe some of it should be digitized and kept as a memory. Otherwise, it's in my files here and I can't even find it, you know, I mean, I'm not that organized, you know, so, and nobody else is going to come into my room and find it, I'll tell you that, so. Anyway, those are really loosely, some of the ideas are floating around.
Okay, yeah, well, I assume that what's holding us up in a way is just always, often cycles back to the fact that we have no funding for this body, so we don't, if we want to do something like that, we either pay for it ourselves, or yeah, or don't do it, as it turns out.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is this kind of leads into figuring out a small budget request for a yearly budget in some shape, manner, or form from the county so that we could have our own website, which would then have an email that linked to it, you know, so that people could be more involved, because right now, not everybody wants to go to the county website, try and find the PRCAC portion, then find, you know, where, you know, the archived minutes are, or a gen, you know, it would just allow everything to be in one nice, easy, accessible place.
No, it makes sense. Okay. Take us from there to our new business, which will, I think, have a new item, at least, at least one new item based on the letter that Sat Paul sent to the community, to some, at least to some parts of the community. But what we have on there to start with is the issue of county council's review of the Point Roberts mandatory curbside garbage pickup and selection process and scheduled for the PRCAC at-large seat, so I think we can, maybe we can do, talk about those two things and then, and then go into any comment discussion on the the letter from Sat Paul. Though on the county council review, if you want to say anything, Allison, I mean, we did put up, we did send a letter to the council last year, a little over a year ago, probably requesting that they follow up on their plan to have a review, and I guess nothing has happened since then, I don't know, Allison.
Well, it was scheduled for a health department meeting, and of course, COVID happened, so that meeting had to be canceled. Right now, the Voters Association and the Taxpayers Association both had been sending letters to the county council and the executive, you know, requesting a lower minimum level of service to the 12 variable rather than the 26, just because that would suit the community better, especially with the part-time seasonal. It kind of accomplishes everything that needs to happen, which is a guarantee for the company. It also helps reduce waste, encourages people to recycle, and it also assists the people who are here seasonally to be able to actually use the allotment that they're paying for. With Sat Paul's do's letter yesterday, I think we agreed to taxpayers and, you know, voters, you know, would be on the same page of we went about it the wrong way, we should have been sending that request to the PRCAC to change the minimum level of service to 12 variable rather than 26. And that would be what I would want to put forward today, is that the PRCAC write a letter to the county asking for a change in the minimum level of service to more reflect our community to 12 variable rather than 26 with recycling.
Well, from, firstly, that looks like another pricing in my trash service, but that's, I'm not the one calling the shots. Because I'm, for better or worse, I seem to be filling up a can every two weeks, but.
Well, the thing is, is you can still sign up for weekly, you can still sign up for bi-weekly. It does not prevent you from signing up for services on top of the minimum level.
Right.
You can still do that. It just makes the playing field, shall we say, a little better, because the people who are seasonal, the ability to use 12 is a lot easier when you're seasonal. For people like myself, I actually only use one can every six weeks. But it gives that flexibility and also it does create more of an incentive to someone to say, hey, I'm paying for 12, I'm using 20, maybe if I recycled more or recycled better, I wouldn't have to pay for the extra, it actually creates an incentive to actually do that, you know, to audit yourself a little bit more and be more environmentally conscious that way.
Well, and we have a situation here too, that we don't know what the resolution is going to be. But right now, there is no one here using garbage at all except for the locals. So I'm sure that people who own cabins here and are paid taxes are getting really, really uncomfortable with having mandatory taxation on that level of service when at, in the busiest of times, they only use it for three months and a occasional weekend. And now, it's, there's no garbage to pick up, there's no garbage, I think there's two cans in my whole neighborhood, mine and my neighbor's, and that's it, out of 15, 20 houses. So it is something to look at. Do you base a long-term change on it, I don't know, but we don't know how long-term this change is going to be.
So I think I would like to make a motion for the PRCAC to submit a letter to county council with a recommendation to change the level of service from 26 variable with recycling to 12 variable with the every other week recycling as a better fit for our community at large.
I don't actually know the terminology you've used several times, what's the variable, what's the 26 variable, 12 variable?
So right now, what we have is 26 can variable with every other week recycling. So the language would change to a 12, 32 gallon can variable with every other week recycling. We're just changing the number in the ordinance from 12 to 26.
What the word variable means in that, in that context, what is it, what is it, why is variable in that?
Oh, variable means that you, right now, you get 26 cans a year, you can put out 26 cans in one shot, you can put them out three at a time, you can put, but you're paying at your leisure for 26, so this just basically changes it so instead it's 12 to put out at your leisure on your scheduled pickup day.
Got it, thank you. That makes perfect sense.
And that would adjust the taxation?
The UTC would then adjust the rate to be reflective of, instead of the truck going out six times a month for the mandatory service, it's only going out three times a month for the mandatory service. It would then go out additionally for anybody who signed up for weekly, which there are people who are signed up for that now, or bi-weekly, and the UTC would just do that adjustment in the calculation.
Although one could wonder whether the rate would just, the service would go down, but the rate would have to stay fairly high to now cover even, I mean, there must be fixed costs in trying to run this type of business, I don't know how the UTC judges this, but I would, I would.
The bottom line.
That they could lower the, or the fee much without having the business no longer be viable, now, I don't know, it's not something I know anything about, but it seems logical that there would be some threshold below which it wouldn't, it wouldn't work very well. I was going to make one comment about, in response to Pam's comment, and I guess maybe Allison touched on this, touched on this too, and I've said this before at our meetings. I don't put much stock in the. I don't put much stock in the particular concern that our part-time residents don't get the full benefit of what they're paying for, because that's the, and this is not strictly speaking a tax, but it is essentially a, what is, many communities is a government service that is covered by taxes. In this case, it's being collected by the county, but it's really all just a private service that's doing it. But this is a a community service, like so many other services, that anyone who pays their taxes gets more or less benefit from depending on whether they live here full-time or not, or in the case of schools, whether you have children or not. Uh, so you pa- you pay your taxes and you, or you pay your fees, let's say in this case, and you get whatever service you can make, get the benefit of. You get your roads, you get your fire service, which happens all the time, even if you're not here. But if you're, you know, I guess you're paying your water bill, whether you're, whether you're using water these, I mean, the way our water system is set up, whether you're using water or not, you're gonna pay some minimum monthly service. So I I'm, I just, that one, on that one particular issue of how it affects our, our many Canadian residents and then of course, the folks that can't even get to this.
But it's not just the Canadian residents. There are multiple people in Point Roberts, I'm not the only one, that, you know, before the service was mandatory, I had pickup from, from can do. My service was once a month. That's all I needed for my family of four. Um, the, in any other place in Watcombe County, if you sign up for service in unincorporated Watcombe County, the minimum level of service that you sign up for is one can per month plus recycling. So to tell a small community who is a green community, who we love our trees, we love all of these things, to say, you have to produce more garbage than anywhere else in Watcombe County and have a higher minimum level seems to be basically an oxymoron. You know, we want to increase people to recycle, we want to keep a green community, we need to reduce our impact on landfills. It's not just about money. You know, it's not just about money, you know. I personally, if they came back to me and said the cost is actually gonna be the same, but I'm going to encourage somebody to recycle more because they don't want to have to pay more to put out those extra garbage cans? Well, then, fine. You know, we have to look at, you know, we don't have any more room for landfills. We need to start educating people on recycling and we need to reduce our impact on the environment.
Thanks. I think your, your comment actually may have answered a question because I saw on the chat session, that's good, that's very helpful. It looks like Louise has a comment. I'm willing.
Yeah, um, the, um, all the companies that are services that you quoted, um, fire and school and water board, those are all government organizations. And if the garbage was a government organization, then yeah, absolutely, we all pay equally. But this is guaranteeing a private company excess, like we're not here to pay taxes to support a private company. We're, we need a level of service great. They were fine with providing garbage um service prior to um 2016. They didn't have a problem and um they didn't, you know, they didn't advertise or anything to increase their business. I mean, just to say to your point, Steve, is your examples of all those business, all those uh services are government services. And um, you know, you can't compare them to this situation because this is a private company.
Thanks, Louise. I believe you can actually compare them. And yeah, the profit, the profit aspect is of course a difference, but it is a function that it in many parts of the country are a, and in many parts of Washington State, I imagine, are a government service. In our case, of course, it is not, but it is uh in most, I believe, and I would probably go out in London and say most of the country, but it doesn't really matter. In much, in many areas, it is a public service and that, and that's why I see it that way. But yes, it doesn't usually have a, a profit uh element added into it to, because it normally isn't a private uh operation. That's, that's, go ahead, Steve.
Well, I just, I don't want to sound too snarky, but don't forget that's how the uh government runs. Uh, everywhere else, the federal government certainly runs by, and the military by um lots and lots of private contractors that we send our tax money to, whether you like it or not. And our soldiers actually get very little of that, you know, just again, not to be snarky, but just, you know, that doesn't take away from Louise's point, but it's just that it's, it's commonly, it's not as uncommon as you might think. I, I, I can understand why. Maybe you don't want to put our tax money into a private company, maybe there's less control. Whereas, but some people would argue if it was all government, we might have less control than having so uh some kind of sword over the head of a private company, which has to answer to um different people than, than a public company might have to answer to. But anyway, those are just some thoughts about that. But um
I would imagine there are many people in, in my, but I have, I have not taken any, made any attempt to uh to learn what the, whether there are people in, in more in our situation. Uh, I was quite happy before we had mandatory curbside pickup and I was paying, I think about a hundred dollars a year to take my trash up to the dump every maybe six weeks or something like that, maybe every eight weeks. And now I pay twice as much for service that I actually use fully. And uh, so if we change the service, people like me and people like, I don't know, but I have no idea how many people are in this boat uh would pay even more for their trash service. And I take Allison's point that it might help us or other people uh reduce our ways uh to try to bring our costs back down. And that would be a, certainly a good thing, but uh it would be a, just a, you know, probably a, a second increase in, in level of cost coming out of this arrangement that we now have, if it, if it went to this new minimum. And I have no idea how, you know, I gotta say, I have no idea how many people in the community or want even more, or use, or pay for even more than what they uh currently get through the mandatory minimum. But I, I can't imagine we're the only ones in the situation that uh, that are actually using allotment. But um, anyway, we, we, any, any further comment from the?
I, I just wondered, have we taken a look, because I'm new on the board. Have we taken a look at an island of a similar size and what that prototype for garbage service is for them?
I'm, I'm looking at Allison's cubicle box on my screen, because I'm guessing if anybody has, it might be Allison.
All of the different island counties and, and areas are all vastly different. Um, some of them don't have curbside at all because um they're considered rural. And the Department of Ecology rule is actually, if you're rural, you don't have to have curbside service. You just have to have a transfer station. So there are some areas on the different islands that don't even have, because they're rural, um, curbside service at all. Um, some that are just strictly county-controlled, not um their own independent city, you know, have you sign up for your garbage and, you know, it's, some areas actually go down to what they call a micro mini-can, which is really small, it's like 12 gallons. Um, but where it's like, you can do a mini-can, you can do a 32, they have once a month, bi-weekly, we, you know, they're kind of all over, but the standard seems to be anywhere that's unincorporated, um, even outside of Watcombe County. It's you sign up for service, recycling is mandatory. Everybody gets the every other week recycling when there's curbside. But the minimum level of service seems to be one can a month. Most of them are actually the 20-gallon mini-can. Um, at taxpayers, we talked about it and said, you know, it would be best just to stay with the 32-gallon can, everybody already has them. You know, don't make everybody go out and buy another trash can. Um, but that basically keeps in line with any area that's not inside of a city limits.
Thanks, Allison. Did I give you some idea, Pam, of what's going on?
Yeah, yeah, because I've, I'm familiar with what's, other island communities um like Bashon, but Bashon's vastly larger and, and it's 15,000, 20,000 people. And you've got a county um transfer station. So it's not really comparable to what we've got going on here. I just wondered if some of the smaller islands had a better system. But it sounds like that's the system you're recommending, Ally.
Yeah.
Well, we have this motion, uh, motion made to suggest that we provide, send a letter to council, ask them to review and to change it. I would, I would prefer to do what we did last year, which was review, ask them to review the standard and see if there could be some change that would make more sense rather than recommending one. But the, but the motion on it, motion is to actually propose going from uh 26 per year to 12 per year, sticking with the 32-gallon uh can size, based on, I guess, what the taxpayers had, had discussed and maybe the voters as well. So that's, that's our motion. If, if we go ahead and, and we'll see if it's a second on that motion and then, and then move forward.
I'd like to, I'd like to have a moment and discussion on that, on the motion, which is that Judson's not here, I'm sure the chamber would like to be represented here and Judson will probably feel like crap that he missed this vote, because I said there wasn't probably a big vote going on tonight. And I think they might think this is a big vote one way or the other.
The Chamber of Commerce represents businesses. This is not a business discussion. This will not affect any business in any shape, manner or form. This is residential curbside only.
But it does affect the business here and it affects, it affects, it affects the dump, it affects the transfer station. And um it also uh is, I think, chamber wants to, like the, the other two groups and the at-large just wants to be involved in every discussion. And I think it's a pretty important discussion. I'm not saying, don't vote on this, I'm saying, maybe we don't vote on it tonight. Maybe what we do is we create the motion, agree that that's the motion. We, oh, it was one motion or two motions, and then send that out to email and, and let uh him have a discussion with them and then, and then actually vote on it next meeting. That's just my proposal.
Let me ask, Allison, do you, I, do you know of it in terms of timing, if anything going on at the county level where a motion now would be more timely than if we waited?
Yes, because it's supposed to be being brought forward for discussion. And it is timely because of the renewal of the contract and such, and the U T C in being able to do their work. You know, you can't wait until this, you know, December, because that will not give the U T C time to be able to change, you know, do the calculations they need to be able to have everything go effective January 1st. Now, it, it is a, you know, timely matter for the U T C, for them to be able to get what they need from the county.
For sure. Well, why don't we, I mean, unless, I mean, the, the, the chamber, however, Judson and the chamber would, would weigh in on this. Would be most relevant if we find ourselves in a, you know, in a two-two tie on this motion based on the, the committee members that are here. And if that were to happen, we'd be stuck anyway and we'd have to wait. Yeah, the motion has not been seconded in the response to a note I just see there. Um, we're having discussion prior, prior to the
I'll second.
And it would be the language used by the taxpayer association.
Pam has, Pam has seconded it, we're not, now
I'll second.
Our discussion after the motion has actually been seconded. Um, so yeah, I mean, if we, basically, the, the chamber's position would be most critical if it turns out that there isn't a, isn't a majority one way or the other. And then their vote would actually be critical, of course, not just important. Uh, but if they're gonna get, if they were to get outvoted, it, it becomes essentially a moot point, although they don't have a chance to weigh in with any interesting comments um that they may have, that they may bring to the discussion. But I would say, based on the timeliness aspect that, that Allison has addressed, that we go ahead and, and vote on the motion, uh which, as a reminder again, is to request that council not just review the status, but to also propose substituting 12 pickups or 12 variable pickups over the course of the year, but 32-gallon can rather than the current 26. Okay, will people be willing to move on to that vote or do you want to rather?
No, I think we can move on. I think that, that the chamber will have something to say. But if, if all we're doing is we're requesting, we're putting it into their docket or whatever, their list of things to consider, better to do it sooner than later. And uh, and if next month the chamber, we hear has big objections somehow, we'll have to discuss what to do with that objection.
Okay. Well, then, why don't we, why don't we vote on this motion? How do you say, I, I would, I'll, I'll vote against actually, because I do think that we don't really know what the community larger community feels about having such a reduction and, and possibly uh increase in their own costs. But it may be all for the good anyway, if it causes us to, forces us to do some trash, get some further waste reduction. But anyway, I'll vote against.
I'm obviously for.
I'm obviously for too.
And I'll be for it. We discussed it in our taxpayers' meeting. And um, we just used the language of uh 132-gallon can per month balances ordered by the owner. That's how I wrote down what we, our discussion was. So that's pretty close to what our motion is.
Highly consistent, I think, with what, what the Allison just put on the table. Okay, so we need a letter to council. Um, I, did you say, Allison, that the voters and/or the taxpayers had already sent a letter?
The taxpayers had sent a letter two years ago, again, a year ago. Um, I actually have it, so I can use the language out of that and draft something and send it to you to um review. And then you can make changes or send it forward from there.
Okay, that sounds good.
If this actually went forward, how long before it would be in effect?
If it goes to council and council um approves it and changes the ordinance to reflect, they would notify the U T C. The U T C would do their rate change and review, which would make it effective on January 1st, 2021.
So it's coming up.
Yeah.
Government bodies work that fast.
The U T C is, you know, they, they have to do their review and they're working on the numbers now, which is why it's important. Um, they said any changes by the county, uh, needed to get to them expedient, as expediently as possible so that they could um approve the tariff.
And one little thought I had about, about uh income, uh mainly the tax income for, um, sorry, fee income for uh uh the transfer station is they, uh, we're gaining people here. I mean, I counted 10 brand-new buildings roughly around town and a few remodels and, and new people moving into older buildings that were, that were empty for a long time. So I'm guessing at least 10 and maybe 12, 15 people that aren't paying will start, or aren't using, will start using. And we're getting that money, uh, the people that, that had a building had to pay it anyway, obviously. But the people that are building a new building, that's new. So there's roughly 10 new buildings, I'm just guessing approximate, uh, that that's new, new income and new load to haul.
Very good. Okay, well, thanks. So Allison, yeah, you do, if you find a letter, make any reasons you want, and I'll, I'll get, I can, I'll take a look at it. Can get back with comments and uh I can send it out once we have that fairly quickly, I guess, just based on the timeliness issue, the timing issue that you mentioned.
Yeah.
Okay. What I had on our new business is the uh, the at-large selection process. My two-year term is my, and my two-year term is coming up in uh, ending in February or end of January. I'm not really sure technically whether it's in January, but February, anyway, uh, it's uh coming up. I haven't decided if I'm gonna seek to retain my seat, but whether I do or not, others could certainly uh seek to have it as well. And so we need to have a process, once again, to put forward a name to the county executive to fill this at-large seat. Some people in the community don't like the process we've used the last two years, the, when I was selected, and then last year when Pam was selected. I don't find anything objectional about the process, but, and I have no great ideas of an alternative to it. But then that, that process has been, that we put out the word that we, that, you know, that the uh, the opening exists, that people should express their interest, if they're interested in, in being considered for it. Then, of course, having them fill out the application with the county. But then having a, a public meeting, which can serve as a candidate forum, as it were, uh, for people, for us to ask questions or for, and, and/or for people from the community to ask these people questions, applicants' questions. And then having a vote, which as we've done the last two times, is a, essentially not fully secret mail voting process, where people just send an email to the email address we provide uh with their preference and we tally them up and we put forward whatever name gets the most votes uh to the county executive as the uh third candidate that he, that hopefully he will select, although he does always, we always have that caveat that he has the, the final say and could, could impose his will. the final say and could could impose his will rather than selecting what we put forward. It hasn't happened so far in the last two times. So I would put that out there again as as a process to try to use, but I know that there has been pushback from not a lot of people, but from some people that they don't like the mostly, I think, the fact that we don't have a mechanism for having a a secret ballot. Because we try to use email, we could do something different where we have a, I guess, a literal Dropbox. You know, maybe at the community center or something. It's hard to do now when the building is closed. We don't actually have right now a good alternative to have a a way to collect like ballots if you wanted to create a paper system. Also have less have more difficulty making sure the ballots are one per person and that the person has given some indication that they actually live here or own a property here. So there are there are downsides from a simple process that might replace this, which I would not recommend we adopt. But in any case, I put it out there for for discussion.
I think what we did before was great.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think anybody I don't think anybody in the community is gonna say, I don't want you to know who I voted for.
I can tell you that I I haven't heard a lot of those comments, but I've certainly heard it might be exaggerated to say five, but I've heard a few, definitely a few people who either said they didn't vote or because of that or were very tempted not to participate because of the fact that it, you know, it was it was not a secret voting process. But but I agree. We've been getting pretty good input or whatever, participation, let's say, from the community. We're obviously maybe missing a few people who are choosing not to participate for that reason. Plenty of people don't participate for other reasons, I suppose. So, yeah, I mean, I'm not against this process. I think it's worked. Okay, worked well enough. Got me here, got Pam here.
Well, it's it's a recommending process. It's not a legal vote. That's that's all, you know. I mean, it's simply that if one person, like last time, one person got a lot more votes than the other person. You know, not ten to one, but it was, you know, sixty forty. So it's pretty clear, you know. So if you trust that those who bothered to send in an email, call them about a hundred or more. That's that's not bad. That's a good polling of who it ought to be. And I think that's safe. Now, if it comes out exact tie or within one, maybe there's some arguments here to do something additional after that to decide. But if it's like it was last time, that far apart or further, I think it's a great recommendation process.
Well, I think you can make an argument to say that if if the votes are within a certain percentage of each other, that both of those just go forward as applications to the county for him to pick between the two. Right? Yeah.
Like that, yeah. Yeah, I don't dislike that as a concept in principle. I don't know that the county executive based on various feelings, they just comments he's made about other things, not about this, but about other things. I don't know that he would. I think it would he might find that a bit of a cop out that we haven't actually put forward a recommendation. Essentially, we're using the public or that we're using the mechanism to do it. But I but I take your point. I mean, yeah, we have to we have to figure out what to do if it was really or if we have multiple candidates, maybe we would force them to have a run if we had, you know, five candidates like we did. The difference is when I when I was selected, there were five people. And Pam was selected, there were only two. If we did have more like five people and there was, you know, two people that were essentially tied at the top, that it might be more appropriate to just have a little runoff. And ask ask them to pick. If we only have two to start with, we can we can cross that bridge if we get stuck with it.
Right, agreed.
Yeah, the county rule is zero point four percent goes into an automatic recount.
There we go.
I recounted many times when I was tallying them. Okay, I will. I will. Let's see. What are we now? This is October. Yeah, I think I will put out something fairly soon again. I did mention that, obviously, the in the last time in the in September, when we didn't have a meeting, I made the point that this was coming up in October for this meeting. I did put it on the agenda. So I will I'll put something out to the county, to the community, rather it through next door and pause to mention that this is coming up. So people that are are interested can consider putting their their name in the hat for that process. And so, well, we probably don't have to pick the dates yet. We'll want to have, I guess, a special meeting in in early December, like we've done in the past, to have that time to but to have that little forum for people to ask questions.
Well, our next meeting is November the nineteenth. So you could possibly state that you would like anyone who's planning on running to have you know, their application or whatever, throw their name in the hat by that date so that on the nineteenth, you can announce. You know, these are the people who are gonna be running and then have the special meeting for the meet the candidates.
No, I can do that. I'll give me or putting out the next. Good. Okay, thank you all. We'll try that process again. Okay, so that's that was all that was on the agenda, but we have that letter that came in from that Paul, which I somewhere on my covered it up. Which I think that's the only other new business I I'm aware of that we could add some discussion about. Because this was a letter that that Sat Paul, our county executive, addressed to Point Roberts community members and sent it to various groups and possibly some individuals. I won't have the list right now in front of me. Making reference to his trip earlier this year, which I think was actually in February rather than January. And coming up with making a few suggestions of what he would like to see coming out of Point Roberts. If I jump to those, I could just read these four points. So when he said, well, I'd like to suggest that we work collectively on these issues. What are the long-term needs of the Point Roberts community to ensure economic vitality and a thriving community? How can the general character of Point Roberts be kept intact? What process would bring about consensus where all voices have a place for expression and consideration? And should we revisit how PRCAC works and its relationship with other community organizations? I don't know where we where if anywhere we want to jump in on any of that.
The answer is sure. Actually, I got all of it.
Yeah, can't really argue with that. Yeah, I mean, if we jump to the last one, which is sort of has to do with the effectiveness of wait, let me see if more chats been developing over time and I haven't been. Yeah, a question, a paper.
That's basically what our function is, is to bring together all the organizations.
I think that's exactly right. I think it's always a it's always a concern that that I personally find a desirable goal, but but unrealistic that we will manage to that there will manage to only be one voice of Point Roberts because it's the nature of things when people don't agree with whatever, even when there is a a consensus that covers much of the community, it's not likely to cover all of the community and you're gonna get larger, small amount of outliers that are still gonna have a voice. And while he's made the point that the PRCAC is sort of the the organ that the the county set up to funnel ideas, suggestions, requests, complaints from Point Roberts to the to the county government. You know, you can't actually stifle all the other groups and individuals who may choose to address county directly. So it's it's aspirational, I think, but I'm not sure it's entirely practical. But well, and I don't, you know, I mean, we've certainly done had lots of meetings on things to try to make sure there has been lots of opportunity for input that we don't always adopt all the input that we get, which I guess is one of the one of the issues that then can leave some rancor in the some parts of the community. But I think I mean, I think something we could do is there's this, you know, this one thing that's been on the agenda forever, you know, have bylaws, which was on Keith Gladings to-do list. He was one of the at-large members. And then when I took over his seat, it got on my agenda to almost two full years ago now, and I haven't made any progress on it. I was actually thinking that maybe it would be useful to turn this from a one-person project into a committee of two. Not not for any reason other than to make it happen, because clearly, like the pandemic started, I thought I would use some of that enforced downtime to finally work on the bylaws and and clearly didn't. Though the possibility of making it a two-person project might only make it happen because one or the other might actually prompt it to 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 move forward. But it can also stick with me and I can try to get myself to work on it. Even before the next meeting, which has never worked before, but then try it again.
If you would like assistance, I would be more than happy to try and help you. If you wanted to send me a copy and we could work on it together back and forth via email and, you know, each grab so many sections and then, you know, find the, you know, just to be able to get it done because it is a large project for one person to try and and do.
Okay, thanks.
And see, send me a copy too. I won't promise how much actual hours I'll spend on it, but I will read it and try to make some comments back, you know, so I won't edit it necessarily, but I'll give some comments back at least.
Okay, I'll try to I'll try to use that as a motivation to get something together that I can get to Allison and you can certainly weigh in, Steve. Well, I'll copy you too. I'll copy everybody on that.
Copy everybody, yeah.
I'll only expect.
Plug away at this.
Should I say it again?
We can all plug away at this.
Yeah, but I don't want to bog it down by having us all trying to get involved, but I think it's good. We'll get it. We'll get it. We'll definitely get in everybody, but but if I can, by by taking advantage of Allison's offering. We'll get it moving and we can get input from from Judson.
Well, with the with the pandemic, I have downtime. I only have two days a week that I'm working. So, you know, sitting at home on my computer, I have some available time.
Good, okay, well, thank you. Another thing, another thing that's been discussed, of course, it would be wrapped into the bylaws if we decided to propose it. There were some discussions earlier about trying to expand the more cha change the makeup of this group, either have all members be at large or possibly having a majority, a larger number of at-large of the at-large, maybe are a larger voice than the community organizations. It's something that's come up, you know, from time to time, but there's no one's ever really delved into it too deeply, I guess, whether that would actually be a better method, if it would if it would make people in the community feel like the organization as a whole was somehow taking public input more strongly into consideration rather than the organizational input with groups that have representatives. But it's something we can something we discuss as we as we work on the bylaws, I suppose. That could be one way to deal with that.
Well, I think work on the bylaws as for the structure we have now and then make the conversation and debate about what we might want to do differently, a separate thing. I already I brought that up and I was a guest at the not the most recent chamber meeting, which didn't happen for me at all. I guess it was like Allison said, it didn't really happen, except for the directors. And so the previous one I was in and we brought that up and they said, oh, no, they I don't think they did a vote, but they said, oh, no, we want to keep it just the way it is. So I was kind of surprised how adamant they all ten of them or however many were actually voting, so to speak, voting with their their voice. I don't think they took an actual vote. So I'm just putting that two cents in. They want to keep exactly the same. I think taxpayers, Mark personally has always been a little bit ambivalent. But but also now hearing what Seth Paul says and so forth, and maybe getting a little success with twenty seventy two. You know, and so we're learning how to do all these things. It's he's a little bit more behind it, especially because he doesn't necessarily want taxpayers to always have to be absolutely at the at the fore of making these decisions, you know, along with the other members and at larges. But 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 I think that maybe has changed in his mind. And I think the group overall is at least somewhat pleased to see some progress happening. And I have other things to say about other things we need to do in the future, but to to make both Seth Paul's desire and our progress more obvious. Anyway, so, yeah, I think that we should have, those are two different things, basically. For now. Current bylaws and discussion about new ways.
I'll try to hope that when the rains, as the rain set in, I will actually maybe put my attention to that and then get something to Allison and then we'll end everyone ultimately. Good. Okay, that's just that was just one comment that I thought might eventually at some point might be useful for.
I think there definitely needs to be a discussion about possible expansion of the PRCAC, whether it's to add more at larges, people from other groups. Because one of the things I do find that it's a lot of work for five people and there's so many different projects sometimes that are going on at once. If you have a larger board with different skill sets, it's easier to create committees of where you know, two members from the board work together with the community to accomplish X while two other board members work with the community to accomplish Y. You know, it just makes it so that you're more adaptable to get more accomplished.
I'm good at delegating.
Then, like you said, with the bylaws, instead of it just trying to be one person trying to do all of this work, we make it a committee of two. It makes it a little easier to get the job done. You know, same when, you know, you're working on twenty seventy two. It's hard being, you know, you were the main person who was trying to keep track of all of the changes and everything. Well, if it was two people working on it, it would have been a lot easier, right, to handle, maintain, you know, if we want to work on the park and getting funds for the park. Well, it's if you have two people who are working on it with the community, it's a lot easier than being the sole person who's trying to go out there and, you know, figure out how to get Lighthouse Park back.
Well, that was one small step that might go toward getting the PRC a little bit more. I don't know exactly what we'd say. Respected, used, better, whatever. But we'll see how that goes. I mean, on his first point, you know, working on the long-term needs of the community. I think that that probably just cycles right back to the idea of trying to develop a current vision, which is something that we we want to do, but might need help from the county or elsewhere to 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 do that.
Port of Bellingham would be the best place to. That's what they do.
Yeah.
At one time, they at one time, the Port of Bellingham offered, but I know that David talked to them again after that and there was kind of, they said no. And then they then they, I guess, again, sort of said, yes, I don't know. It was like whipsaw. I don't know what all that meant.
The place to start.
Yeah. I'll go back to them, of course.
So one big thing, if we're done talking about that for a second, one big thing is we've done of the list that came out with the taxpayers' meeting is we have done nothing with TBD funds. It's a million dollars, even though we had one project that was sort of happening. And then the last thing is that the voters and taxpayers developed a really lovely priority list, which Seth Paul has not seen that we can work on. And we talked about this in one of our PRCAC meetings, you know, look at it and revitalize it and provide that because if we're trying to show some progress, I think looking at the priority list and looking at the TBD funds and hopefully sooner than later, get some bylaws done. Those three things would be a lot to show Seth Paul that we're making some progress in making the organization more inclusive and thought well thought out and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yep, not that, yeah, that list was, I just have it here on my screen.
Yeah, just to clarify, part of that list was done also in collaboration at the time with the PRI BC.
Right.
Yeah, but I see on your list that you that the taxpayers, as discussed, I guess, yesterday, there's also this concept you brought up at the beginning of the meeting to see if we can get the county to liberate just a small amount of funds. That could get us a recording secretary and maybe a website, just as, you know, two very small, fairly small.
There might be a person in town who is very good at that, who for a small amount of money per meeting, you know, small, I don't know what that means, fifty bucks, hundred bucks, I don't know, would be willing to do it. And that person is not necessarily a PRCAC person who is then embroiled with all the discussions we have and all the issues and so forth. They're there to basically listen and to try to document. And so and then any other extra money could go into the institutional memory and on the website, all those other ideas. So it just depends. But I know we asked that, or we asked Jack Lous and he basically, I So it just depends, but I know we asked that, or we asked Jack Lous and he basically, I I can't remember who asked that, maybe Alison remembers. Somebody asked Jack Lous, I don't know if it was.
Well, it may have been Joel, because I was I was at a meeting where Joel said he.
Maybe it was, yeah, and they said no, basically.
He was going to pay out of pocket himself to have a secretary so so that one of the members wouldn't have to spend their time trying to be.
But it's actually in the ordinance in which that the county can provide. Either a person or funds for a person. So I think Joel took no for an answer too quickly.
And he was certainly generous with his money. I know he wasn't spending a lot, but he was spending. So it was nice that he did that.
And anything else from that list you wanted to go over, Steve, from the taxpayer?
Let's see, uh, small budget, we talked about possibly. New at larges, institutional memory, Seth Paul's message, we talked about garbage, that's it. The priority list was the last thing on on my list. Yeah, yeah. And I again, that's I think that's a great thing when whenever we get it done. To send to Seth Paul, but obviously the rubber hits the road with that. If we send him something, it better be something that our groups really think is a good idea. A good set, and then we're not going to hear, he's going to get a bunch of emails saying, what a stupid idea. You know, number nine was or something, you know, so we do have to do that work and kind of recast out the list. And draft form out to people and and have it come back and and so forth, so.
Be good. It'll be good to revisit that list after after what's turning, what's looking, it's turning into a year of, you know, pandemic closing up just a few months.
I think it's vital that at the. Planning committee. Meeting prior to the planning committee, you don't get to talk at a planning committee meeting, but you can send a letter to the planning committee. Which is. Oh, and off the top of my head, Tyler Bird, Ben Allen Bass and Red Brown. To state, you know, that. Yes, this is what we came up with that was put forward by the planning commission. But we really need access to funds, personnel. You know, we need to start with, you know, our economic development plan so that we can then do our sub area plan, so we can then do our zoning. But put it forward to them. And then again, when you speak at the actual open hearing. Reiterating that to the county so that they can. Put it as a higher priority and let Seth Paul know that, hey, we took your words. And you said you're willing to help us. Okay, we know where we have to start. Help us. And that will, you know, whether it be the port or, you know, how how we go about it after that, knowing how much help we're going to get. From the county and not being put on the back burner for the. When is the newest code revision for all of the sub area plans for Waukesha County? Twenty twenty five? It's twenty twenty three or twenty twenty five? Is when that's docketed for the rest of the county as the whole comprehensive review. I don't think we want to wait to start for another three to five years.
It's a good idea. We send that letter to make sure there's agreement from the committee, but. Uh, in line with what Cliff Strong mentioned, he definitely was supportive of that idea of putting that. Putting it forth, and if it starts, it's good to start with a letter first to the committee and then. Reiterate that in in personal direct comments at the at the council meeting. His his caution to us, though, was to be aware that that, you know, it's good to start bringing it up, but it's not, it's likely not going to happen. Immediately. So we start bringing it up now. We're probably starting. It's been brought up before, but bring it up again now forcefully in the context of this. And then hope that. As we bring it up again and again, eventually it actually comes to us. I don't know if we get a motion for this, but if we do, we could have one. Is there support for sending this letter to?
I'll make the motion. Sending, well, what's the motion? To send a letter to the planning commission before their meeting, which is coming up, right? Secretary Economic Plan Visions Sub Area. How much help can we really get is what we're angling for, to say loosely.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor? I am.
I.
Okay, I'll work on that letter and send it or I can send it around to you guys. I got nothing else. Does anybody have anything else?
Need to see everybody. Except Meg, we can't see Meg. Or Tom.
Meg's blowing air kisses.
I saw your note, Meg. Yes, I I will. I forgot what you asked for, but, uh, oh, yeah, Seth Paul's letter and.
And Tom, you don't have a video camera? You're a nice looking guy. How come we don't get to see your mug?
I already sent Meg the poster for the recycling that.
There he is. You're muted. You're muted.
Very poor lighting.
No, it makes you look kind of like an angel from.
First time that's ever happened in your life.
I I would I would like to add one thing if it's not out of order.
Keep it brief, sure.
Sure. So. I think what would be what would be very advantageous to all organizations, individuals, whether they be. Residents or or voters, taxpayers, you know, there's such a mix and there are so many folks who are. Longtime Canadian visitors to the point who haven't been able to be here, and yet they've been. Some of them dual citizens, some of them taxpayers for decades. Is to is to perhaps within the crafting of the letter to County Council. To to try and strike a positive overall tone, which is a consensus that that wraps up. The the present scenario, which of course, because of the 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 dirt, you know, the the items on your agenda this evening. Ha- haven't actually been able to be touched upon, which of course, front and center, which is the 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 border restrictions and the and and the. And the difficulties that that come with that, the challenges, is is perhaps something more in in line with a mandate. Or a a guidance factor for the PRC AC going forward. These items that have been, you know, spoken about tonight are are certainly front and center. But the one thing that has been left off is the is the 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 restrictions on freedom of travel and so forth. So if if in your letter, you can perhaps encapsulate all of the concerns and considerations in one go. I think you might strike a more current chord. Because I think they all are tied together, that the 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 twenty seventy two issue has been going on for some time. But some of those other items are very much unique to the circumstances which have have become the circumstances. Because of COVID and because of the border restrictions and because of the reduction in the in the in the number of bodies here on the point. Hence the difference in the numbers on the trash and so forth. So when you write your letter, perhaps you should consider. Including the present circumstances as a bit of a framework for why these issues are. Important once again, because the data has changed, the circumstances have changed. And I think that that will that will get far more attention regardless of where individual organizations may differ. I think it's important for the point to continue to reiterate to the county. That these circumstances are compounded by present circumstances. And I think I I know the PRI VC can stand behind that because. You know, the the work that we did last year and the work we've done in the last three to six months has changed every three to five weeks based on the circumstances. And right now, the circumstances are just so. So try and capture the present circumstances inclusive of. What has caused us to be in in that much more of a difficult situation so that it's encapsulated in that letter? Because that's that 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 really is what's, I think, going to to garner their attention more than anything. Is that this this COVID scenario has. Galvanized certain issues as being front and center. And I think you might find you'll you'll get a lot more traction out of it that way.
If I understand you correctly, Tom, basically what you're saying is in the letter. In asking for the assistance that we need to be able to do our economic development study, to be able to do the sub area plan and everything. And to try and get that process to be more expedient. Would you basically be start off with, you know. The with COVID, the border lockdown and everything, it is just brought to the forefront, shall we say. That this is something that we can no longer wait to do. Something we need to work on now, you know, it should have been work, you know, we should have done this years ago. It's twenty years old, but. This is kind of just brought it that, wow, we really need to get start working on this now, not. Three, five years from now and that they might hurry it up a little bit.
Right, yeah. Old wounds and recrimination. I think it's 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 sort of an imperative at this point to to recognize that. Where many other areas in the United States may not fall under the same. Situation, this, all of these items and many more. Actually fall under COVID relief relief for Point Roberts. COVID has impacted the economy and 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 the the governance in Point Roberts. Far more so than any other areas. So it should be a galvanizing factor in the in the way you comport with the county. It it should be, it should be one of the key key trigger elements as to why you're putting these things forward in the first place.
Well, I think the fact that we've already received help in in shape, you know, Port of Bellingham was willing to step up in the beginning. They had actually. Had organized for people who had boats, just private boats if we needed help and and such. Yeah, there was an email chain before the ferry. One of the port commissioners had reached out to people in Bellingham who had larger boats. That if the people of Point Roberts found themselves to be in need of necessities that could not come. Through the border because they were concerned about whether commercial traffic was going to be impeded, that they would be willing to volunteer their time in their boat to bring us supplies. So they were very obviously active in getting us the passenger ferry. I think if we approach it in that aspect that the port of Bellingham. You know, like Stephen Wolf had said, you know, they had kind of gone, yes, we'll help you with your economic, no, no, we won't. Yes, we will. I think at this point, they would be more than happy. To help us because of our situation that they would put us to the forefront.
Thanks, Tom. Augmented by Alison as well.
So, yeah, do we agree that that we a sentiment like that should be added?
I think it's a perfectly reasonable thing to. Couch the couch the current plea for support. With the current disaster that we're facing. Makes sense. We can see how it turns out. We actually try to write, try to write something and that's used to get, but I think I think it makes sense.
Yeah, because we don't know when this is going to end, you know, it just, you know, the Canadian border, it came out in the news over the last couple of days that. It's just going to keep getting, the closure is going to be extended every thirty days until there is a drastic change. In the numbers inside of the United States. So this is not something that's ending this month. It's not ending next month. You know, we don't know when this is going to end. It's a virus. Viruses usually have a two year long. You know, at least H one N one was a two year long process before, right, it it calmed itself down. So I think we need to be proactive. Of knowing this doesn't have an end date.
Well, not not to start a political discussion, but I partly, when I saw that from Canadians, like in the Canadian government, I wondered if it was partly. A suggestion that if the government changed, they with a different perspective on how to deal with the virus, they might. Have a different perspective on us, but we'll see how that turns out. May not be the case at all. Anyway, anything else from the from the committee? Otherwise, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Good to see other adult humans. I'm enjoying that.
Hi, everybody. Greetings from Poopfell.
Definitely.